Sharon's gonna lead us in the pledge. If you would, I'll rise. We begin every one of our meetings with prayer. We good in the back on live stream? Thank you, sir. Please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you give us in our life. We thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon Brandon. Be with us today, Lord, as we make decisions and we look to you for our guidance and our direction. Or continue to be with our first responders, our military here and above, Lord, as they protect us and keep them safe. But once again, thank you for all the blessings you give us each day. Forgive us of our sins in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Hey, we can move with saints now. My God.
All right, thank you for taking time out of your day. This is the first opportunity I've had to reach out to MDOT and ask them to visit with us. So, don't know that we really have public comment for now, so we're gonna go ahead and move through the agenda. Need a motion to append a special meeting notice to the minutes? Motion by Mr. Sharon Romack. Who said that? Second by Mr. Harry Williams. All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. And you'll notice that we're missing one board member or audience, and that would be Mr. Chris Vincent, and he may walk in the door any minute. All right. Thank you again for taking time out of your day. Try to mop up a couple of things here and take care of things. One popped up at the last minute. Number two, on the agenda, consideration to approve a professional services agreement for the purposes promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other lawful related purposes authorized mayor to execute same and approve payment of all show related. Long and short of it is, the opening act for this Saturday canceled, and this is a replacement for that opening act is what that one is. Audience, we have a concert here this Saturday night in what we call the big room around here. Any questions on that? A motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Sharon Romack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Number three, consideration adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute related documents and agreements required in connection with the application for the drinking water systems improvements and revolving loans program through the local governments and rural water systems improvements board. And Amy Butchley is authorized representative of the city of Brandon as making application for a potential water well behind the fire station on Star Brandon Road. That's all that is. So, we'll begin that process. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right, now for the real reason here, not gonna require a vote or anything, but like to invite our friends with MDOT. I've shared with them that sometime back, maybe two board meetings back, we had a lot of conversations about the downtown Highway 80 widening project, lane addition as it's going on. And I thought it was prudent to be asking them, since we're not, we don't have any more, well, we might. Might just have to surprise Mr. Baker with a board action on something. Anyway, I'd like to invite them up and let them introduce themselves. First, we've got, there we go, the man, the transportation wizard. He is chairman of the board for the Mississippi Department of Transportation. Served in the senate for a few years and hope we get at least another term out of him. You haven't told me that whether you are or not, but anyway. He's my friend, and I appreciate him taking time out of his day to come over here and visit with us. And he might have an update or two for you that he wants to share with you. Commissioner Simmons, please.
Thank you, Mel Lee. Good morning. Let me thank you all for allowing us to come this morning to share with you kind of where we are in the county as well as to talk specifically about the project with Highway 80. This, Brant, let me say Rankin County is a county where I think all your corridors, all of your highways are major corridors in that you move a lot of traffic. It doesn't matter which one that we're looking at or which one we have challenges with. We have to put a bridge in, replace a bridge, or do work on a bridge. It become a major, major problem because you have so much traffic moving on it. So, we're very pleased as the Department of Transportation to work closely with Mel Lee and you to talk about what your plans are as well as what our plans are so that we can put it in sync and work together on it. Here just to keep you, just to make you aware of the fact that here in Rankin County, we're very excited about two projects that we're getting ready to complete and do a ribbon cutting ceremony on. And that's on November the 25th, what we refer to as Highway 77, you refer to it as Highway 477, I believe. We call it the West Rankin Parkway. That project along with the roundabout at the airport on Old Brandon Road. We are going to open up both of those projects on the 25th. Do a ribbon cutting ceremony at West Rankin and then go over to the airport and do a ribbon cutting ceremony. So, we invite you to participate in that. That's gonna do great things for folks going to and from the airport. We replaced that roundabout because we looked at it and it's one of the oldest and probably one of the worst roundabouts that we have in the state. So, we wanted to update and upgrade, and that project will be completed. The West Rankin Parkway connecting Pearl and Flowood together and taking some of the traffic off of 49 and some other areas become very important because we know that when we get that project completed and get it open, it's gonna give you some relief, but it's not gonna give you all the relief that you need because we are constantly forcing traffic off the interstate and off of other places. The interstate system, Interstate 20, which is very important to you. We are just about to complete work on Interstate 55 on the Pearl River Bridge, which has been slowing traffic down somewhat, whether it was on 20 or on Interstate 55. We also are getting ready to do the last big overlay on Interstate 20 in your area. Where we're going to, I believe it's at the second, what, what, they even changes it, Neil, that we start at? East Brandon. East Brandon and go all the way over to the Rankin County line. That's gonna take away some of that rocks and stuff that you've been getting hidden windshield. Wants to get that completed, but once we do that, then we're gonna come back with another project. We was able to get 172 million, I think, for a special project that we're going to redo Interstate 20, starting at the stack and go all the way over to Highway 18. When we do that, that's gonna be a bill, design and bill project. When we do that, we're gonna shift traffic off of 20 somewhat to Highway 80. And that project should get started next year. So, just kind of making you aware of the things that we are doing that's gonna be impacting you. When you look at the old Rankin Road and Highway 80, we have completed the Highway 80 Bridge and Old Rankin. We've completed it, the Highway 80 Bridge that was closing Highway 80, it's been completed. But we have another bridge we're working on, which is slowing traffic down some, but we should be completing that project sometime soon in the near future. Highway 25, we doing work on it in the Rankin County area and moving that project. Once we get some utilities completed, remove, we will move that project. So, once again, Rankin County, once we get to doing all the things that we have in place, Highway 18 is another big project and be concerned with you when we talk about getting on and off the Interstate 20. That project is on our radar, and we're gonna be moving that project going forward also. So, I feel good about where we are in Rankin County, but you wanna talk specifically about a project that the mayor has been concerned with. So, we have our staff with us today, our LPA staff, because we're gonna run that project through LPA. We also have the district engineer, Neil Patterson here. So, Lee Frederick, Mitch and Neil can answer any questions that I don't have the answer to. And there are many of them that I don't have the answer to, and you'll have an opportunity to speak directly to them. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Lee up to talk about the special project that he's working on.
Thanks, Commissioner. And thank y'all for letting, letting all of us come and visit with you today. I know that the mayor is, is, I've kind of outlined his priority as far as the Highway 80 corridor coming from I-20 into downtown Brandon. Right now, at the present moment, there's no funding identified for construction. We are currently working toward a public meeting, which would help us close out our environmental document. And at that point, we can move into final design. What I would propose is if this is something that the board wants to take up and run with, we will have the project designed. And if, like I say, if it's a priority for the board, we would, at that point, turn those plans over to you guys. Y'all would acquire the right of way, you would relocate the utilities and pay for construction. And MDOT would come in and provide the professional services for the CENI. Because that's our typical process on a state maintained facility. To date, I think we spent about $450,000 on professional engineering services in this final design. We're estimating it to be upwards of about another $250,000 that we're putting towards this effort. The CENI, I don't have a real number for that. The overall construction cost, I did get a conceptual cost estimate this morning, and we're still looking at roughly about $10 million would be the cost for construction. As construction alone, we're not talking right of way, we're not talking utility relocation, just the construction. So, it's gonna be a pretty good lift. But that's, that's all the information I have on that one. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the other projects.
Have y'all done any kind of studies or anything to see what that would do with traffic? If, for us to do this project or when maybe y'all were looking at it? Do you have any idea on that?
Yes, ma'am. So, all of the design would have been based off of a traffic impact analysis. And the improvements for overall operations of 471 and even further into downtown, that's the reason for the way the design is, is to consider all the inflow of traffic off of 20 and then outflow from downtown Brandon to help improve the efficiency of the movement of traffic.
How long ago was that analysis done?
I don't have an answer for that. I can get it though.
Is there any specific timing for that?
You just said it would basically approve, improve the traffic flow. I mean, anything, any percentages, anything like that?
I don't know the answer to that either.
Okay. Thank you.
So, when you say turn the project over to us?
Yes, sir.
Would there be any money, funding possible from MDOT to help us out with that money?
Not at this time. We have no intention or priority at this time as part of our three-year plan to move forward with this.
So, it wouldn't, so be, be beyond three years before y'all would even be looking at that?
Yes, sir. About a minimum.
You mentioned, Neil, if you had any idea if it was set up to not include utilities? An idea of what to look at there?
So, until we get through final design, it'd be really hard to say and speculate. You would have to finalize your right of way impacts first to figure out what would have to be acquired. And then based off of that, then you would reach out to the utilities to see how everything would be moved forward.
If we move forward with this and say you're gonna design the, design everything, what are the, are there city? Let's say we can't find additional funding. Is there obligations for the city to do anything, move forward, what have you? Repayment?
No, sir. I mean, if, if nothing is done, then I mean, it would be something that would eventually, I would imagine, come up on our radar. I just don't have a timetable for what that looks like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, if you would, Lee, give them a little background of who you are. You are, you took over for LPA some years ago and worked with you through NPO and all these other projects. So, tell them who you are and how you've progressed and where you are now, your experience dealing with local publications.
So, again, I'm Lee Frederick. I'm the director of pre-construction engineer for all of MDOT. I started out in a project office up in northwest Mississippi and in 2014 came down through construction division. Did a stint in, in between stints in the construction division as a consultant. Came back, had the good opportunity to take over and run the, the LPA division within MDOT. A couple of years ago, or January the 1st of '24, I took over the current position that I am right now. So, for about six years, I was fortunate enough to run the LPA division. And we've seen several projects come, come through the city of Brandon, Rankin County and the surrounding areas. So, it's, it's been a really good, huge blessing for me to be able to help out with some of these projects.
All right, and now you've got a new LPA.
I do.
Engineer. And you gonna introduce him?
Absolutely. So, like to bring forward Mitchell Young. He's the state LPA engineer now. He's the young man that'll be reviewing, I believe, a, a traffic or transportation alternative project with City of Brandon. Is that right? You come to get TA app?
Yeah, several TA applications. And there are any, for the LPA program, the first is playing with that is any time there's a local entity that receives federal money that comes through MDOT, it comes through the LPA division, through the LPA program. So, our role is to help the LPA, such as the city of Brandon, to administer their jobs appropriately. To where you, you perceive federal money, and we want to make sure you follow all the federal guidelines. Kind of helping the FHWA oversee the funds and make sure everything goes smoothly and nobody gets in trouble or breaks any of the federal rules. Not y'all, but I'll say other LPA sometimes tend to get funding and then wanna do whatever they want to with it. There are a lot of rules and red tape that come along with federal funds. We're here to help guide through that process. You mentioned the TA call for projects. We have transportation alternatives as one type of funding that is awarded through the NPO and through MDOT. I know the city has applied through both of those. So, there's a likelihood that you get funding toward a, a new transportation alternative project here in the near future. The commissioner asked me to speak on why we think this may be a good idea to move forward as an LPA project. Honestly, I think the biggest reason for that is the lack of funding on the MDOT side. There's no plans in the near term for MDOT to move forward into construction. Whereas if you take it as an LPA, you can seek additional federal funds and try to find grants and other opportunities to find funding toward it. You may be successful, you may not be, I don't know, but that's probably the fastest avenue of getting to construction.
Is this something that y'all would help us do, get funding, even though that you're not gonna be helping provide funding? Would you help us get federal funding, or is this something that we're strictly on our own?
So, a lot of times, if you are seeking an earmark or discretionary grant or things of that nature, you'll have to have, you won't have to have, but a lot of times, LPA's will seek a letter of recommendation or things of that nature. And we most definitely will be able to help with that.
All right, avoid the quiet here. I believe someone asked a question last time about the amount of dollar value. Now, you stand there for a minute, because you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we also need to talk about the railroad and Highway 80 up here. Yeah, y'all go ahead, then I'll start. Go ahead. Give us an, give us an update if you would.
So, the railroad project out here on Highway 80. I did get some really, really good news. We've been sitting waiting on a, a attorney from the railroad for a little while. We finally got some movement with that yesterday. We got comments back from the railroad on two agreements with MDOT, and those were sent back yesterday afternoon as quick as we could get them turned back around through our legal division. And that is sitting with the railroad right now as we speak. I spoke with the city engineer about their permit as it pertains to the sewer line that, that will have to be relocated during construction. He has made all the comments that the railroad has asked him to make regarding insurance and things of that nature and has not heard anything from him. I asked him to go ahead and bump the railroad again so we can have some kind of dialogue back and forth and make sure that they're, they're in a good place and can give the, the city the permit at the appropriate time. That project is currently scheduled for a January, right now. I hope not to move it again, but the railroad has not been awful friendly to us. So, I'm hopeful that we're in good spot at this time.
Let's finish the bridge first. So, if you would, give us your opinion. You know, I give the board my opinion and from the experiences I've had here, and I'm gonna share some more of those in just a second regarding transportation. But your experience and your thoughts were if you let it in January, how far down the road before they begin construction, do you think?
So, if they, if we let it in January, you'll have a 90-day period to consider the ECP. So, you're looking 90 days, that's from the time of the award. You let it in January, you awarded at the first commission in February, so it's from February, so you're probably looking at the start in May for June.
So, then that would be a construction company, starting in June, mobilizing and probably going under construction, disassembling bridge and that kind of thing, probably about time to start school, August of next year.
I think you would be right at the end of school, actually starting a lot of the demo stuff.
Okay.
I would imagine.
And just from your experience on bridges, the amount of time it would take to replace that bridge and get it back, open back up?
That's probably 12 to 18 months.
Okay. Y'all got any questions about the Highway 80 Bridge and the impact on the city and traffic and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I guess my question is traffic. I mean, I'm, I'm a layman. I'm gonna go ahead and say it. The last time y'all worked on that bridge, just one lane. It was a ni, it was a pretty much nightmare for about every how many months. So, how do they go about dealing with traffic when you're taking one bridge down and trying to put a new one in?
It's, it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a, I wouldn't say nightmare, it's gonna be a dream. I don't know how, how much of a dream, what side you wanna be on. But it, I can promise you it'd be a lot better when it gets done, a lot safer. Because I don't know if y'all had the privilege of going and crawling up and under that bridge, but it is not, you know. I'll be a lot more tickled when we get it replaced. Yes, sir. It, it's not gonna be ideal. It's gonna be a growing pain that's, I promise you, necessary.
You mentioned, Brad, impact analysis, when it's done, previous to the rock.
Yes, sir.
Is there something to be shared with?
I hope, don't, I don't see why I could. It'll probably have to come through a public record request. That's how we typically handle all that stuff.
All right, so it's, again, this is not taking out a bridge and putting another one back, it's taking out two bridges and putting one bridge back. And long needed, and I don't want you to think, Commissioner would attest to this. I don't want you to think that bridge was built, I believe, in 1936, the one on the westbound lane. It's coming to the end of its useful service life, and they're all over Mississippi like that. This is not a unique thing, the Rankin County or anywhere else. And MDOT well knows that, and they're in the business of making bridges and transportation lots safer for Mississippian. So, we're not alone in that regard. But this one sorely needed, and when they did cut it down to one lane, it's because they were trying to shore it up underneath. One side of it keeps slipping down a little bit, not, not a lot, but it is moving. And it's just, again, at the end of its useful service life. Gentlemen, am I misstating you, Adam? You're the subject matter experts here, right?
No, sir. We were losing some of the webbing and the beams underneath the bridge, and it had gotten to a very critical point in the, in the structure's life and safety.
Right. To the point where I won't even let the fire truck, the ladder truck go over it anymore, you know? Just to avoid that amount of weight on it. All right, so now you wanna talk about the loop? You mentioned conversation about that. Go ahead.
So, out at Highway 18, the intersection of I-20, we've got a couple of loops that we're looking at right now. I think northbound, 18, that loop will move forward into construction.
Define what the loop is, I understand.
Okay, so, at the interchange, you have, if you're northbound, you have to cross southbound to get on I-20. What this effectively do is you'll be northbound, you'll loop around, and then you'll go I-20 westbound. So, that, that'll be a safety measure that we'll be able to come in. Northbound lane was considered first for Phase A. We went ahead and planned ahead. You'll have both of them that'll be planned for. The funding was only identified for one of them, the northbound. So, that's what we're about to begin scoping Phase B. We just finished stuff. I think we had a full review earlier this month. So, that's, that project is underway and it's, it's, it's running forward.
Give us the, you know, schedule, you think you get through Phase B, then what, then what, then what? Just a timeline, because I don't know, Mr. Bowers is gonna put it in the paper that that's being considered, and everybody that's coming north on 18 is gonna wanna know when, when, when. And that's all we're gonna hear is when, when, when.
That, that was the one question that I did not look in through our, our software to, to make sure that I had with me. I just got the status update for where we're at, time zero. For Phase B, we're in the scoping process. Phase B for that effort would be probably another 12 months or so. And then, like I say, if everything checks out, we get utilities relocated. If there's a need there, then it'll be sometime ahead of that. So, within the next probably a couple of years, I would imagine, barring any kind of significant issue, as long as the funding is still available, we're planning to move forward in that for that.
Okay.
Wrong with that? Neil?
I thought we did. So, that's what we're looking for.
Great. That'd be much appreciated.
Like I say, barring any kind of funding issue.
And then we got into a couple of questions about what other size projects that we've been involved with and money and LPA and other transportation things around here. I told you the story of Highway 80 East, which was a quarter mile, two signals, and how we compiled the money to do that. That was an LPA project. I can tell you the other construction projects around here, it was $11 million building the on-ramp at Exit 54 down here where we added a travel lane underneath the interstate, which some folks, some engineers said you couldn't do that. It got done. That was an $11 million project. And 471 to the city limits was two bridges, bridge over the railroad, bridge over the interstate. I think that one came in at 67 million, if I remember right. East Metro, which is not an MDOT road yet, we built it to that standard, and they were involved in the whole construction project. And I came along with Mayor Rhodes at that time, and we got Phase 2 built, and we got Phase 3 built. And just Crossgate Boulevard alone, alone was an $11 million project. And I don't know that that'd be much over a quarter mile, but you're dealing with everything that was in there, all the infrastructure, everything else. Then all these NPO signals and projects we have, you know, I sit here and add up. I can name, I think, 13 different signals that have gone up in our time together here in the board. And some of those brand new, some replacing wired signals, but then offset traffic lanes and things like that. And the next thing you're gonna see is orange barrels on Highway 80 coming from Crossgate Boulevard coming this way. Because know that's gonna be an LPA project where we're doing those offset turn lanes in the medians where there are no signals. That's the next project that's already been approved, and that'll start soon enough. So, quite a bit of money, if you added all that up, just the 13 signals alone. 13, I don't know, is that $30 million worth of stuff? So, we're not, and the other end of that rainbow, engineers, is we have experienced a, a less than satisfactory construction company where one, just an LPA project that just kept dragging on and on and on. It was sidewalks in downtown and out here at the bridge to the library, just, anyway, it kind of turned into a nightmare. So, we learned some very important lessons about dealing with a, a not-so-real-good company that bid it. So, that's an example of low bid is not necessarily the way you wanna go sometimes. You gotta be guarded with that. All right, so I see you brought a new map over here with the turn lanes in it and that kind of thing, a little bit different. That's just a big map. Underneath it's the same thing. And I just want the board to be exposed to you and hear from you that if there's gonna be probably funding. Commissioner was very kind, allowed me to come over to his office. We sat down and spoke for over an hour about transportation and, and Brandon, everything from when he said loop, the reason why I wanted him to explain that, that was loops at Exit 54, which is the Crossgate's exit, the loop getting back on the interstate. Well, around here, we know that, Leah Mitchell, is the loop is the four lane that goes all the way around Brandon. And I know that's an ongoing discussion with the county, and I'm glad the county's involved with it again, but we're involved with it too. So, we'll be getting updates on that sooner than later, I hope. I'm trying to still get them here for the county to express to us what the, what the. I'm trying to still get them here for the county to express to us what the, what the progress is on that and we'll go from there. Commissioners, thank you for taking time out of your day to come. Again, we've got the district engineer here, we've got the commissioner here, we've got the LPA division director here, and we've got a construction guy here. So we got the, we've got the knowledge here in the room. If you've got any question, board, about MDOT political, MDOT construction-wise, cost-wise, you've got the entire state's ability except for maybe Brad here to give you some insight to any question you might have. Commissioner?
Mayor, you know, we have what I consider the best team that we can have put together. Under the leadership of Brad White and these gentlemen, along with about 2,700 other employees. So we're so excited about where we are. The only thing that we probably didn't mention that I would just like to bring to your attention, we recently approved and committed $500,000 as our first investment on a passenger rail. That passenger rail is going to come from the east at some point from Atlanta and go all the way over to Dallas. Part that we're looking at right now is coming out of the Meridian area, coming through here, and we are proposing that there'll be a stop of the passenger rail at the airport here in Rankin County. There are another one in Jackson, you know, with Vicksburg, and then it headed into Monroe and on over to Dallas. We think this passenger rail will be very, very good for Mississippi because you will be connecting to east from Atlanta all the way to Dallas and connecting it coming out of Chicago through Jackson into New Orleans and from New York into Meridian. So we think that's going to be something good. And we have committed to working with the Southern Rail folks to make that happen. They just recently opened a rail, passenger rail from New Orleans over to Mobile, and that's doing real well on the Gulf Coast. And we think here in the central part of the state, we would do well by having such. So we, the commissioners, a couple of months ago, put $500,000 in the pot as our match to go after the first money that's going to come down from that. Senator Wicker, Senator Sidney Hyde Smith, Congressman Guest, Congressman, Congressman and all of them are very supportive of passenger rail. And we think we're in a good position to make that happen.
Yes, sir. I've learned from you and many others, it's how you compile money and combine it up. You know, people are looking for the federal government, state government, local county government, yes, but we're all looking for ways, when you put skin in the game, it brings it to another level.
It's important to do that.
Very important. Thank you very much. Any, any questions for the commissioner, board?
I just want to say thank y'all for coming today and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, in addition to the mayor, you have Sharon Womack up there who I've known for a long, long, long many years and she harasses me just like he does.
Harasses you. Y'all be ashamed. I'm going to tell on you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion of Ms. Sharon Womack, second to Mr. Jerry Crane, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board.